What you got all day to get to?
I take the food.
Maco, how are you?
Good to see you.
All right, I believe we will call the May 1st council meeting at order and request that the first cover roll.
Mr. Gray?
Here.
Mr. Roger?
Here.
Tom Newbrook?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Posey?
Here.
Mr. Shaw?
Here.
Mr. S.
Here. At this time, I'm pleased to say that the mayor's going to provide our invocation and then Mr. Posey the pledge.
Let's pray in the Lord, we are just grateful to come before you this evening to discuss and settle the business of this great city. We're grateful how you have blessed us. Thankful as we work now in our 50th year, and we would just pray for direction for our next 50 years as well. Tonight, Lord, I also lift up to you Fire Chief Kevin Sutton, Fairfield Fire Department, fine man who lost his life yesterday. We are sad for the Fairfield family and certainly for the Sutton family. We would pray for his wife and his daughter as they've been significant injuries as well. So we lift them up to you. We pray again for our business tonight. We just lift these things up to you in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Amen. Let the digits to the light of the United States of America and the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, are we ready to accept a motion on the minute?
Mr. President, I move for approval of the minutes without briefing.
Second. The motion is second. I want to favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Mayor, I believe we have a fourth section employee recognition.
Thank you, sir. Anthony McCain. Come on up here. We again have the distinct pleasure of recognizing our employees that have over 25 years and Anthony had started 25 years. Anthony's been here for 25 years. He was hired in 1992, promoted to truck driver in 97, and a heavy equipment operator in 2016. He's, you see him everywhere. He's an outstanding part of our family and we just appreciate everything that he has done and we're glad you made 25 years. Congratulations.
All right, next we have Resolution 5566-17.
Resolution number 5566-17. Invitations to bid for the portable basketball goal systems, bid number 17-013, were sent to 84 vendors listed on the City of Hoover vendor list. Bids were opened on Thursday, April 27, 2017. Two bids were received, bid of Covington Flooring Company Inc. the amount of $53,250 was the lowest responsible bid submitted, meeting all specifications and requirements.
Mr. President, I move for approval, Resolution 5566-17.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any questions from the council? Then we had, we did have two qualified bids, correct?
Yes, sir. That's great. The votes are qualified.
All right, thank you, sir. No more questions from the audience? No more questions from the council? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Next item is Resolution 5567-17, Mr. Corley.
Invitations to bid for the point-of-sale system at the Finley Center, bid number 17-015, were mailed to 147 vendors as listed on the City of Hoover vendor list, and the invitation to bid was also posted on the City of Hoover website. Bids were opened on Monday, May 1, 2017. One bid was received, the bid of Global Merchant Services in the amount of $58,594 was the lowest responsible bid submitted, meeting all specifications and requirements.
Before asking for a motion, I have a question. Then, since we only had one qualified bid, should we make any motion susceptible to the mayor negotiating for better price and not to exceed the bid price?
Yes, sir. I believe that's what the resolution recommends, is recommending to reject the sole bid, other as the bid might change since Thursday.
Correct. All right, thank you, sir. With that, I'm open for a motion.
Mr. President, I move for approval, Resolution 5567-17.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any questions from the council? Then, I understand this was a seven-day bid?
Yes, sir. We posted, one week earlier we did post, because two we did. No, it was one week.
And maybe you could explain a little bit, just a moment, why it was seven days versus where it was standard?
Just, just because of the time crunch and trying to get some, get everything taken care of prior to the opening of the Finley Center.
This was a budgeted item.
It was budgeted?
That's correct. If it's budgeted, why is it just now getting to the opening speed?
There were some plans and design issues that had to be fully developed before the bids were submitted, would be great.
All right, thank you. Any other questions from the council?
Mr. President, does the $50,594 bid fall within our budgeted price range?
Yes, the budget throughout the process has been $75,000, so this is well within our expectation.
Any other questions? Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the council? Yeah, I guess I'll probably take the motion.
I'll move for approval, 5568-17.
Second. I guess there's still a little bit of learning left. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Resolution 5569-17, Mr. Corley.
President. I'm sorry. 68.
Right, this is 68. Number 5568-17. Invitations to bid for the truck-mounted LED video screen rental, bid number 17-017, were sent to 36 vendors listed on the City of Hoover vendor list. Bids were opened on Tuesday, April 25, 2017. Two bids were received, the bid of Go Vision in the amount of $17,000 was the lowest responsible bid submitted. However, this bid was non-conforming since it did not meet all specifications and requirements. Therefore, the bid of Screenworks LLC in the amount of $22,000 was the lowest responsible bid submitted, meeting all specifications and requirements.
Mr. President, I move for approval, Resolution 5568-17.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Then we have a non-qualified bid?
Yes, sir, that's correct. The apparent low bidder, Go Vision, submitted a proposal for a LED display screen that was not the correct size. The size that we specified was 19 feet by 33 feet, and they submitted one of the 17 by 8 by 27. We talked about that Thursday. I guess what I'm making towards is should the motion include the same language to ask the mayor to actually, actually better in such a way that they can get a better price and not to exceed the bid price? But, actually, I think I've revisited that issue recently, and that only applies when we receive, when we receive one bid proposal, not just one bid with specifications. So, kind of a strange situation, but I would recommend moving forward with this bid as submitted.
Very good. You think after a couple of years, I know what's going on. Oh.
What do they go by?
All right. We've got a motion and a second. Any comments from the council? Any from the audience? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item 5569-17, Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes Mayor Frank Raito to execute a professional services agreement with the Neil Schaefer Inc. Engineering Farm to provide engineering and inspection services for the city's roadway lighting project along US 31 from the Kahaba River Bridge to Patton Chapel Road.
Mr. President, I move for approval, Resolution 5569-17.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions from the council? Any from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item number 5570-17.
This resolution authorizes the closure of two checking accounts at PNC, the sports facility pre-open account and the sports facility post-open account.
Mr. President, I move for approval, Resolution 5570-17.
Second. Have a motion and a second. For those that weren't here Thursday, these were checking accounts that were open to use with the metropolitan complex, but was never needed and no money was ever deposited. So, we're just going to close them out. Any questions from the council? Any from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Mr. Corley, Resolution 5571-17.
This resolution authorizes Mayor Frank Raito to execute a consent to change in control of Southern Light LLC to authorize a change in ownership control in accordance with the city's franchise agreement with Southern Light substantial at the form attached as exhibited to the resolution.
Mr. President, I move for approval, Resolution 5571-17.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any questions from the council? Any from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Mr. Corley, Resolution 5572-17.
This resolution authorizes the president of the council to execute a group application to initiate the rezoning of property owned by the City of Hoover as a part of proposed Trace Crossings 11th Amendment.
Mr. President, I move for Resolution 5572-17.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions?
Mr. President, this is not, it is in any conflict with the case coming before PNC on the 8th. It's not? Thank you.
This is reworking the document.
This is just initiating the process. Send it to PNC.
Mr. President, a question.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I was not here at the work session Thursday, but I don't recall my last four years here ever doing this, so why is this one different than other resolutions?
We did this earlier in this term, I guess probably within our first 60 days, if I remember right. Mr. Corley, if you'd like to further explain what we're doing.
Because of the property exchange, the city has an interest in this property, therefore must join the application to send, in order to sign the application, the council gives authority to present. Everything goes to planning, it's under consent, and council would recommend it.
That's not just like 30 different votes that prompted on every one. Any other questions from the council? Any from the audience? Any other questions in the corner? Scratching? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Mr. Corley, change order number two?
Yes, this is actually, it's a change order in the amount of $6,445.07 for items related to the Hoover Recreation Center locker room renovation. President, I move for approval of the change order.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any questions from the council?
Mr. President, as per our conversation on Thursday, I did reach out to Mr. Leiter and asked and request that a separate role be put on all change order applications that show a percentage increase. Reasoning behind that is state allows you a maximum of a 10% increase in change orders, so it kind of gives a idea of how far we're close with to that.
Were you able to obtain the best vote?
No.
Do we request that?
Now we're fine. Moving forward.
Just moving forward. All right. Mr. Ross, this will close this project out?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions from the council? Any from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I hope for him to do another and forward with the question.
This is a long time employee, 30 years. How many Foxes been with us for 30 years?
I bet he had hair when he first got here.
He was here in 1987. Groundskeeper. We've known you a long time, Adam. Your whole family, really. Currently is employed as a crew worker and actually he's part-time, he's been with us for 30 years as a part-time employee. That's a, that's a long time for a part-time job. Congratulations, Mr. President. And his wife Janet is here, along with his son Richard and Mary. Y'all want to come down and get a picture with him? Or you want to stay, stay first?
Now, for that, I'll throw you there.
Sure it was with her permission that you were able to sleep.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Back to the agenda, I'm in for a change and second. We're getting aboard 17-23-28.
The city has been requested by property owners Daniel and Teresa Browning to annex their property located at 2161 and 2169 Silver Spur Lane into corporate limits of the City of Hoover. This ordinance provides for annexation of property located at 2161 and 2169 Silver Spur Lane into the city limits of the City of Hoover.
Mr. President, I move for the adoption of ordinance number 17-23-28.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any questions from the council?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
This one's, this one's a hard one for me, because, and I think we talked about this a couple, couple meetings ago during the work session. You know, if we were just doing this for the sincerity of the applicant, if we were just doing it for the, if they're good people, or if they're cool people, or just, and I know there's been some discussion with the past administration and what, how long this has been going on, if it was just about that, then I would, you know, it'd be high-fives all around, we wouldn't even vote. A reception afterwards, it'd be nothing but positive stuff. But, annexation is serious business. You're adding land to the, to the city, that's a big deal. And when I look at this, I've done a lot of looking online of the land use for this and, and it's, it's, I don't think this is the best thing for the city. We have a big chunk of land that's A1, scaling agricultural. It's surrounded by Hoover industrial, and this isn't just like part to industrial land, this is, we're actually putting industrial things on this land now. And I just don't see how doing parcels of one and two, 1Z, 2Z estate zoning without trying to go for the whole thing and come up with a plan for it. I just worry, you look at the map, our current map, and you look at some things and you're like, where in the world did that happen or how did that happen? I don't see this as cleaning up the map. I think we're filling in some gaps, but I think we're, we're adding some land use that doesn't seem like it goes, goes with the other surrounding plots, so. And maybe, maybe Matt could comment to that. I don't know if our new players have a chance to look at any of this, but that's my biggest concern with this, that I just, if there were about the people applying, I'd be, I'd be all for it and I'll see how anybody could, could be against it. But it's, it's serious business to annex land in, I just don't think this is the right thing right now.
Shaw, are you indicating all nine property owners coming at once?
Or an effort, to increase the amount of land that we're looking at, so there'd be more of a comprehensive approach to it. But I don't know many efforts been done.
I know there is another opportunity, the Browning here, that you're back. You don't have to get up, but I just want to ask real quick. If the council, because I don't know, I haven't talked to anybody to see how they're going to vote. If it were the wishes of the council, would you be interested in pre-zoning property as the state lot prior to finalizing annexation?
It doesn't matter to me how you think it is.
Okay. All right. Secondly, you've got two dwellings on this property.
Two dwellings?
21 and 16.
One dwelling.
Okay, you've got two addresses, though. One of those?
One is a vacant lot.
Okay, very good. That is my question, does anybody else?
I've got a couple of questions, Mr. President. Trying to be repetitive, Mr. Shaw, I think he did an eloquent job of explaining some of my concerns, and we talked about this at length at work session and annexation committee too, and I apologize, we're going to do it again tonight, but the Brownings have spent an awful lot of time building their property with their own hands, and they've done a magnificent job of creating a homestead out there that I know they're very proud of. Having said that, Mr. House indicated to us, or confirmed for us, that there's many parts of the property that do not meet the standards that Hoover has for residential properties and land with the city, one of which is fire protection. I know that Captain Lo did indicate that we can service it, but on multiple occasions when this one has come before us, they've recommended that we do not annex this into Hoover. So, given the fact that there are multiple parts to this property that do not confirm, or do not conform, I should say, to the standards that we have, I'll be voting no, just as I did at the annexation committee. Furthermore, I wish Mr. Presley was here tonight, I don't think he is, but he showed an awful lot of courage at the Board of Education meeting, I guess the first meeting in May. He talked about the votes that came out of annexation, it quite frankly surprised me. It really opens the door to what could be growth that this city has not seen in terms of landmass growth since the early 2009's when Hoover grew by leaps and bounds. And you might say, well, this is just a house or two houses. Yes, it is, but we're talking about now going to the periphery of the city and annexing properties that are not surrounded by Hoover for the sole purpose of adding homes. Beginning in early 2000 when the Patelus administration came in, you were part of that, Mr. President. You guys did what I think was one of the most forethought decisions that this city has seen in decades, and that's to really cut annexation until the city could catch up in terms of infrastructure. We're not calling it yet. Mr. Presley said that as much in his statement at the end of the council meeting, that, or I'm sorry, at the end of the Board of Education meeting, that given the number of homes that are currently on the books with annexed properties, they are barely able to meet capacity at that point. The city council that's willing to go out and add land for the sole purpose of adding homes without commercial property to support that, will put them in a situation where they will have to build more soon. It's a dangerous proposition that this city has not seen in decades, the possibility of, again, opening the door to growth magnitudes that we've not seen in decades, it's very dangerous, and I just encourage my colleagues to think about that as you go.
I'd like to take a moment myself. The issue of fire protection, to me, is a large part of my consideration for this. The fact that the fire department is willing to let their fire dues and respond to me somewhat negates the question about fire protection, because if they pay the fire dues, fire department's going to go anyway. Now, Mr. Leiter stated several insightful things, especially dealing with education. But, does this mean going forward, Hoover has mostly within Bluff Park, but also other areas of the city, almost 150 single-family dwellings that are surrounded by Hoover on all sides. Would this be an indication that perhaps the annexation committee would be taking another direction on the building unit? And I, that may be a rhetorical question.
No, I think, I think that's a great question. I appreciate you bringing it up, Mr. Smith. The annexation committee and the council, in the time that I've been a part of it, has shown interest in helping, I think the term we use is clean up the mapping for the city, and I think we've done a good job of that. This is not to that effort. This property is not surrounded by Hoover. Any other questions from the council?
I, I just have to say that I understand Councilman Shaw and Councilman Leiter's concerns. However, I will disagree that this property, to me, looks completely surrounded by the City of Hoover. Now, I know that the back property on Silver Spur is also unincorporated, but if you look beyond that property, they have no other choices. It's the City of Hoover, or it's the county, or we de-annex property to allow them to go to Homewood or another city. To me, this is more about a vote on quality of life for these homeowners. When the city, many, many years ago, decided to annex all the surrounding property, they gave them no other options, and I think left them out in the cold. So, I would question the past council's decision on, on this vote. They've been trying to annex into the city for over 10 years, I believe. Each time, there's a, there's a new hurdle that they've asked. Each time, there's a, there's a new hurdle that they've asked, been asked to, to accomplish, they've done so. They have shown dedication and passion to wanting to be part of this city, uh, and I'll applaud them for that. I see no, uh, desire to, to further develop this land from them, they are, they are there, they're passionate about their home, they want to be a part of this city. To me, it's about quality of life. As far as substandard, uh, parts of the property, I understand one of, one of the concerns is roadway. How many houses are on Silver Spur Lane? Browning, do you know? It's eleven lots. Four houses on Silver Spur Lane. So we're not talking about a thoroughfare road going to anywhere. There's four homes. Uh, I don't see much maintenance being done on this road, and as Councilman Smith has already pointed out, the fire department were already collecting dues. So, uh, for that reason, I'll, I'll be supportive of your, uh, wish.
Other questions or comments?
Mr. President. Uh, when, let's, let's rewind a little bit, as chairman of the committee, I wanted to give you some background. The night this vote was taken, with this property and the other properties that were on here, uh, Mac, you weren't, you weren't with us at that point in time?
That's correct.
That's correct. So we were not, we, there was a conversation that was held out here in the audience about a very, very large piece of property prior to this conversation. Ms. Browning, if I'm correct, you have one child that will be coming in the school system. Mr. Havron has zero children that will be coming in the school system, am I correct?
I'm, I'm not sure about that.
So we're adding one child to middle school or high school?
Oh, she's in middle school.
Middle school, okay. So one child in middle school. So when you walk into a meeting, you have this large piece of property on your mind, you're thinking about that, certainly your mind is going to be on, oh no, we might, this is eight hundred acres if we annex this. So we were talking more about that than we were about this piece of property. Um, I, I, I agree with Casey, if we're not going to annex this square of property, then we need to look at a line where we can connect, we can de-annex and connect them to Homewood or to Birmingham, because there are no other options. And Ms. Browning's been trying to come into the city since all of this around her was annexed, and, I mean, you know, I think back to when Bluff Park was annexed, when I was a child, it, we wanted to be part of Hoover, Ms. Browning wants to be part of Hoover, her neighbors want to be part of Hoover. So we can continue to kick this down the road, we can continue to say, well, if you'll do X, then you can get in, or if you'll do Y, you can get in, or we can, we can take a vote tonight and see where we stand on this, and, and I think that if we do annex this in, that your, your neighbors would want to come into Hoover, and we would take that square off the map. And I don't think that moving forward, that we're going to look at taking, not, not taking in single-family homes in, in certain areas, I, I don't think that's the right thing to do, but certainly with a large tract of land that would come forward, I would want to go to Mac and talk to Mac about this first and see what his plans are going to be, what the land is going to be moving forward. Um, but looking at these and these single-family lots, I, I think we need to move forward, and I think we owe Ms. Browning to vote on this.
Mr. President, if I may, um, and I made these points last go around, two different You know, A, being the, as a board member of the school board and also the chair, uh, of the school board, there's, there's fundamental things that you look at, and that's, uh, planning. And many times with annexation, uh, you just all of a sudden find out things have been dumped in your lap, and your goal is to ensure you educate our kids. Uh, with us growing and being a city that's grown, growing, and many people are planning to move here, uh, as more jobs coming to the region, uh, I think it's, uh, behooves us to look at the process, uh, communicate, collaborate with the school system to find out, A, what are their needs, because it is some needs now, regardless of the fact. And if we're going to continue to grow, uh, in many areas, how are we going to take care or help or aid the schools? So I think, A, conversation has to take place for us, process and planning, A, definitely developing how we're going to identify what areas we're going to annex, because one of those things, you can't kind of pick and choose, you get this on Friday, you get this on Tuesday, you've got to have some type of parameters to go by in the process. Uh, as far as this particular property, this particular property for me alone, uh, the reason why I voted for it out of, uh, committee is due to the fact that this homeowner has been told to do certain things over a year's time, and once this homeowner has done X, then you need to do Y, and once you do Y, you need to do Z. At some point, you got to choose to say, hey, look, you know, not going to annex any, stop right there, but, uh, they have made certain concessions to move forward in the process. So just to wrap it up, that's the reason why on this particular property I voted out of committee. And, and, and B, can we, uh, seriously consider, uh, before we start talking about stopping growth and sending a false message, uh, to our community, that we, uh, have a sit-down conversation, uh, with our school district, and what we're planning on doing for our city, what areas we legitimately planning on annexing, I mean, what, what, what does that model look like, and navigate from that point?
Thank you, sir.
President, I'd say just a couple of points, I'll be brief, because I don't have already spoken.
No, no problem.
Okay. Uh, to one of Dr. Middlebrook's points, uh, and to your point, too, you mentioned the hundred fifty, and it's actually more than a hundred fifty single lots in, in the community. If you look at the map, you can actually count a lot more than that. A lot of them are paying fire dues, but we have to settle on what that definition is, because if we're going to say surrounded by Hoover is just any group of lots that are surrounded by Hoover, or just a single or one, one or two, then that's a completely different thing. If you look at the map, there are lots of groups of lots that are surrounded by Hoover, uh, either completely or enough that it makes it very hard to go somewhere else. And if we set a precedent by saying, well, any group of lots that's surrounded by Hoover deserves to come into Hoover, that, that's a lot more housing than a hundred fifty. And, and, yeah, there's lots of different kinds of housing that we need to, that we need to take into account if we're going to set this precedent. So I understand your point about Dr. Middlebrook's, but we, we need to look at the precedent we're setting with this larger group that we're encircling. Would we define that, single or multi-groups of, of lots?
Mr. President, the only thing I would like to add is, uh, mentioning the hundred fifty houses, how many of those, we have any idea, if we set a precedent, what's coming to do? Have you done?
Three of them.
Just saying, we, we can't say the hundred fifty will be moving into Hoover.
Ms. Browning, anything you'd like to say? Don't have to.
I, I don't think so.
Okay. I don't need to make you walk all the way down here. You're not prepared to. Any other comments from the audience? Mr. Singer? Don't forget, you're supposed to end your comments.
On the Sunday, six, uh, six thirteen River Avenue Place. Last month, we hired the city planner, which means that the start of the master plan review is going to be starting shortly. That is where the Board of Education, the city council, the city administration, the library, all will be getting together, together with the residents and businesses of Hoover to express their thoughts and ideas as to the direction of our city. I mentioned at the last meeting that, considering that the master plan is shortly restarted, that we call upon to all annexations until we have heard what to do. Now, if I recall correctly, this particular, uh, property is more than six acres in size, and, uh, there was a concern that quite a number of houses could be put on that acreage, which is why we changed it, uh, uh, we're suggesting the idea of estate lots, which would be one acre in size minimum, and so it would reduce, but it's not one house on one lot, it's potentially a lot more.
Of course, uh, Singer, if I could interrupt you just a moment, for them to build additional houses or create additional lots, whatever, for the city, yeah, the city would have to be willing to allow that.
But again, my point is why the rush to do the annexations now? We should be waiting for the master plan when everybody gets heard, put together, we've got two excellent planners here, you know, to lead the process. Uh, it shouldn't be a matter of conversation, but it should be a matter of public input.
Singer, your, uh, recommendations, I took Marshall as well.
Uh, everything.
Even, even property that can start? Create revenue for the city?
Yes, because it would, it would just be a short delay, it would not be plain favoritism one way or another. No, if it's a matter of zoning change, zoning changes comes through, okay? But, uh, annexation is, is something that doesn't need to be done right now. I shall leave it to him.
That was his history on the left side. All right, do you have any recommendations?
Well, I do agree with the gentleman that, uh, comprehensive plan is the opportunity where we all gather together, the elected leadership of the community, um, our school system, uh, specific stakeholders that, uh, definitely play a major part in the development of our community and the citizens of Lawrence. And, uh, we are quickly approaching the time where we're going to kick off that, uh, that particular project. Uh, one thing I would say, and it just really depends on, uh, what you guys do best for the community, but generally, in my practice, if there is a particular piece of property or several properties that are surrounded by the city limits, you do have to take a number of factors into consideration. Uh, I've heard some very good factors, which you guys have been discussing, um, and one other factor that I would just throw out, you know, I know there, there is a, an additional means of controlling land use here in Jefferson County, uh, Jefferson County has zoning, but it's, at least my understanding, the city of Hoover does not control what that zoning is, or unincorporated portions of Jefferson County. So just another thing to think about is that if, uh, if the annexation were not to go through, uh, the homeowners, property owners could go to Jefferson County, decide to do something else with their property, relocate, rezone, and then you just have another, another set of issues to deal with depending on what they want to use their property for. So just one other layer on this, uh, that I can see is at least with the annexation of the property, you would have some added control over what goes on there in the future. But, uh, but it sounds like you guys have thought long and hard about this, and, um, and I, I'm encouraged to see our elected leadership taking such a proactive role in deciding the future of the city, and I look forward to working with each and every one of you as we get our plan kicked off. And I don't know if the mayor had something that he wanted to add to that or not. Okay. But, uh, but that was just coming to mind after hearing all of the different topics being discussed. Uh, one additional one that, uh, that certainly if this has not been discussed is one to consider, because I know, um, in my past experience, uh, in those pockets, we had some pretty unsightly things happen, and we had no control over it when it's outside of our city limits. Any other questions for me? I've, I've taken the, uh, the approach of, I have two ears and one mouth for a reason here in the first couple of weeks, so I'm continuing to learn, but, uh, be glad to help anywhere I can.
I believe Mr. House is going to take three years to get you to understand everything that he already knows. It was either three years or three weeks, whichever one.
Mr. President, I, I call for a vote.
All right, you call for a question. Um, Madam Clerk, if you please, call Brown.
Mr. Brown. Mr. Lita?
Aye.
Dr. Middlebrook?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Nay.
Mr. Smith?
Aye. Five ayes, two nays. Ordinance is adopted. Browning, congratulations, uh, pays off the law. Uh, Mr. Corley, uh, ordinance seventeen dash twenty-three twenty-nine.
Second reading of ordinance number seventeen dash two-three-two-nine. The city has been requested by property owner David Havron to annex this property located at twenty-one seventy-three Silver Spur Lane into the corporate limits of the city of Hoover. This ordinance provides for the annexation of property located at twenty-one seventy-three Silver Spur Lane into the city limits of the city of Hoover.
Mr. President, I move for the adoption of ordinance number seventeen twenty-three twenty-nine.
Sir.
Motion second. Four comments, I, I think that, um, this on the heels of the other is going to, uh, instruct the annexation committee to, uh, be careful in how things move forward, uh, how they can look at it and such. With that, any questions from the council?
President, if I could?
Yes, sir.
Um, you know, last time we talked about the sincerity and what the landlord did through to be part of this annexation process, um, this one's for sale. It's actually listed online and that's being for sale right now. So I know that was a big motivating factor on our last, uh, annexation vote, I just wonder what, um, again, I don't see the person, this one is for sale, this person is putting the house up for sale to, to move out or give it to another owner, um, that takes that off the table as a voting factor for me even further.
Using the city to try to get more money?
Have no idea. I just know that it's, it's for sale now, so we, we talked about, and that was the difficult part of that vote for me, was the, the person that had requested this for many years, and the sincerity of that person, but in this case, the, the, it's, it's for sale.
Do we know how long it's been for sale?
No idea. It's currently listed, that's up to date.
Any other questions? Any questions from the audience? Uh, is-
Mr. President.
-Davron here tonight?
Mr. President, one quick question. This particular property is, uh, is this the first time this property came before the council, unlike Mrs. Browning? Does it have any background?
Madam Clerk?
I believe it's the first time it's come before the county, I think it has to be before the committee.
Any, any, special, uh, recommendations that that council offered for this property that was done by this homeowner?
I don't actually remember right now, I don't recall the details, but, um-
If I can recall, um, I believe that it was for the same reasons that Browning's had, uh, but at that time, the property was not for sale. Personally, I do have an issue with people choosing not to be in the courts, we tried, and it didn't work, because people used the city in an effort to make more money. Any questions from the council? Any from the audience? Madam Clerk, if you'd call the law.
Mr. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Lita?
Aye.
Dr. Middlebrook?
Nay.
Mr. Murphy?
Nay.
Mr. Posey?
Nay.
Mr. Shaw?
Nay.
Mr. Smith?
Nay. The ordinance is not adopted. Uh, Mr. Corley, ordinance seventeen dash twenty-three thirty.
The city has been requested by property owner Diane Robins, Robertson to annex her property located at seven-twenty Carl Rains Lake Road into the corporate limits of the city of Hoover. This ordinance provides for the annexation of property located at seven-twenty Carl Rains Lake Road into the city limits of the city of Hoover.
Mr. President, I move for the adoption of ordinance number seventeen dash twenty-three thirty.
Sir.
Motion second. Any comments from the council, any questions?
Mr. President, I would just iterate my first point, that this is a property that surprises me, the city seems to be opening the door to move-
The city seems to be opening the door to move further. This is not a cleanup block. This is solely for the purpose of adding homes to the city of Hoover, I'll be voting now.
Is this property on the exterior of the city, or is it surrounded by the city?
Exterior.
So it can open up other areas to come to the city to request annexation? Any other questions from the council? Is Ms. Robertson here tonight? Do you have anything that you'd like to say now?
You know, I've been in the city for eighteen years. I've been paying for our bills.
Why don't you come down, maybe give us your name and address? Even though I'm sure we probably haven't. Annexation's always good when we're talking both ways.
I was just saying, I've been hoping here since nineteen ninety-nine. My city is, they have between River Chase and across from my property line, which is Shelby County. I pay for our dues, my husband passed. I would like for the police lease to come. I don't have to wait for the county to come like twenty minutes after whatever's happening, it's taking place. And if I have what needs for my, if you'll come quickly. What are your vote decisions?
I believe that, you know, if you're staying currently, you're fired, and you don't have to worry about that. Chief, I'm going to assume that if she had an emergency where police were needed, y'all would come and take care of things until the county could show up.
That is correct, that's my all.
But in the past, the county has come in this like twenty minutes later, after my alarm has gone off. So unless something's changed, we can.
Is the alarm dispatch going into Shelby County, Jefferson County?
I don't know who the county that I'm.
Who are they reporting to, Jefferson County Sheriff's?
They're reporting to the county, Jefferson County.
Any questions for Ms. Robertson?
Ms. Robertson, do you have any children at your home?
No, I'm a kids involved. I'm a grown kids living in a.
I have a question for Mr. House. Mr. House, you say it's not, it's on the exterior, it's not surrounded by Hoover. Our map is not quite complete, it doesn't go out far enough. But I see blue going around it and then up on this upper portion as well. Does the city continue up here? And then we're just saying it's on the exterior because the portion that's not annexed, it's connected to, do you understand my question?
Yes, sir. All of the homes accessed, all homes at Hoover along Carl Rains Lake Road are in River Chase, do not front the road, but front their internal subdivision streets. This is the first of several houses that front Carl Rains Lake Road. It joins Hoover on one side, which is south, and this is definitely a hole in the city, but this is one of those holes that is a couple of hundred acres in size probably, so. It's a little bit different than the Silver Spur where you're talking about twenty acres.
But going further up is what I'm asking, past this unincorporated area, is this the city of Hoover to the north of the unincorporated parts?
No, sir, not on this map. That blue is hard to see on the dark picture. The blue runs up the right side of the page. I don't think, it does not run across the top. But if we can't read them, if it's not hard to see the blue on them, I think the point that I was responding to is that everything around there is in River Chase, doesn't front Carl Rains Lake Road. This would be the first dwelling that would be annexed on Carl Rains Lake Road, others on down the road.
This would open, possibly open the door to additional requests.
A couple of more, yes.
There's only one other, two more houses down the road.
How far down, you say there's several hundred acres?
Well, this, everything that's not shaded blue is in the county. So everything across Carl Rains Lake, you see the scattered, it's a very large area to the county.
I'm looking at the map, this, with the ordinance itself.
So did it butt Hoover on one side?
Any other questions from the council?
Just one quick point again. Hey, when do you believe, I'm sorry, when do you believe we'll have somewhat of an idea as far as planning wise, how to define our vision towards annexation? Or can, is that a fair question to ask Colonel right now? Good idea.
Well, if it's going to be a component of the comprehensive plan, I believe our timeframe that the mayor and administrators have talked about is trying to get a consultant to assist with that within the next month or so. Early June at the latest, and then on an eight to ten month timeframe, once we get our consultant picked out and we hit the ground running. So that's a general timeline that I'm working off of right now. And certainly, guidance for annexation would be a component of that.
Right. And last point, however annexation's here today moving forward goes, and the variation and idea of how we're going to annex comes up, when it comes up in that plan, can we or is it allowed to kind of go back and discuss these criteria with people that have probably been denied under today's ruling and process versus eight months? I guess right now, without a clear process now, what we're doing in two thousand seventeen and this current date moving forward, can we go back or is it allowed, does it make sense to go back and educate those applicants?
Well, I think the comprehensive plan, once we have that in place, that's going to be the community's vision going forward. And there may quite well be some instances where it's definitely strategic for us to annex some properties and for others it might not. So it's a little difficult for me to completely answer that this time.
It will be part of it.
That's right.
There is another option, because, you know, we're pretty good at keeping records nowadays, right? Said, I'll lay it up somewhere in the future and say, hey, just remind everybody about this. Ms. Robertson, there is another option, I believe, before we can verify this, if we would. I don't know how the vote's going to go. I know how I would vote. This would be extending the city further down and exposing more property to the option of annexation. Good request that your application be held until the call of the chair after the comprehensive plan is complete, then the council take it up again. Correct, sir?
Yes, you can continue it indefinitely.
It's just a thought. We go ahead and give you your vote tonight. All right. Any other questions from the audience? Any other questions from the council? Madam Clerk, if you please, call the roll.
Mr. Green.
Aye.
Mr. Lydon.
Aye.
Dr. Middlebrooks.
Aye.
Mr. Murphy.
Nay.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Shaw.
Nay.
Mr. Smith.
Nay.
That is four nays.
Three ayes. All right. Sorry, Ms. Robertson, but at this point, the ordinance hasn't been further down, but if you would stay on top of the news, perhaps after the comprehensive plan is complete, next you might want to come back, okay?
Mr. President, what's the minimum timeframe she has before she can reapply?
I guess she can reapply right away, or if someone who voted in the prevailing wish to revisit this, Mr. Corley, somebody who voted on the prevailing side could ask that it be brought up again. Make a motion for reconsidering, which could happen tonight, but no later than the next meeting. That's not your point.
No, no, I was just trying to provide her with information.
Well, I think that it would last through this quarter and everything after this four year term, if it's holding, will automatically be denied, if I understand my rules correctly, and then that would require, but we have until the first Monday of November twenty twenty before you can bring this back and us deal with it. Anytime thereafter will be dealt with whoever is here in the next administration. Okay?
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry, you just confused me with that statement. You said now she has until twenty twenty before she can reapply.
Well, she can reapply tomorrow, she can reapply tomorrow. I think part of that was my computer, where if she had asked for a continued, then it would continue for the end of this year.
Got you, okay, now I understand, thank you.
I had a Mr. Wright on. All right, Mr. Corley, ordinance seventeen dash two-three-three-one.
The city has been requested by property owner E. Bruce Irwin to annex his property located at five four one zero Highway two eighty into the corporate limits of the city of Hoover. This ordinance provides for the annexation of property located at fifty-four-ten Highway two eighty into the city limits of the city of Hoover.
Mr. President, I move for the adoption of ordinance number seventeen twenty-three thirty-one.
Second. Good motion, second. Mr. House, is this in line with the two eighty overlay?
It's located within the Highway two eighty overlay district. The property is currently developed, portion of property is developed, portion. Any future development of the vacant portion will come down.
Any questions from the council? Any from the audience? Hearing your singing, Madam Clerk, if you call the roll.
Mr. Green.
Aye.
Mr. Lydon.
Aye.
Dr. Middlebrooks.
Aye.
Mr. Murphy.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Shaw.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Motion, ordinance is adopted. Mr. Lydon, payment of bills.
Mr. President, I review and I recommend the big Peyton fool.
Second. Didn't slip a medical in there.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Lydon had a little procedure that took him out of service last week, reached him a quick recovery. We have a motion and a second. Any questions from the council? All right, all of us say aye?
Aye.
Aye, that's supposed to be aye, the ayes have it. Comments or questions from the council?
It's Thursday, that's a Friday.
That is a prayer day. Mr. Mayor, tomorrow morning is Mayor's Prayer Breakfast. I understand you have just a few people that have breakfast with, a little over five hundred maybe. I would also like to congratulate you, Mr. Mayor, and the staff, especially Aaron, go along with the wonderful job that we had this weekend to celebrate Hoover Day and our fiftieth birthday party. I believe this is the first time since we've started making those ten foot pies and all of it was actually meat, so that's a plus. Anything else from the council? Anything from the audience? Mr. Singer.
Arnold Singer, six thirteen River Haven Place. I too just found the celebrate Hoover Day to be really great. I moved here shortly before the first one, ten summers ago, and I volunteered then, and now I was volunteering with the Hoover Historical Society, and it was really a fabulous turnout despite the heat. People really, really enjoyed themselves. Prior to this evening's council meeting, there was a meeting of an economic development committee and a presentation was made. I will not be in the state on May fifteenth when this would come up before the council.
Do you mind pushing away, can you get back?
No, it's okay. But my thought was quite simply, why does the city, why is it proposed that the city put up twenty thousand dollars to do some of the initial funding? It is a privately held company. There would be less restrictions on them if they did it without twenty thousand dollars from the city. It still would be their option as to any contributions they made to the city, or not made to the city, but let's say just choose to help the Hoover Schools Foundation. The increase in sales tax revenue either will work or it won't work, but there is no need, in my opinion, to, for us to be involved in funding an effort like this. Free enterprise is the basis of our country. I think this is a marvelous opportunity for free enterprise.
Dr. Middlebrooks, I believe you had a question with the media getting together. Since Arnold won't be around, is there anything you'd like to say about Hoover's?
I'll be happy to address it now unless the chairman of the Economic Development Committee prefers to speak on it. Thing, I believe during our campaign, and even now, there's a lot of discussion surrounding Hoover being retail centric and our tax revenue base and the city's efforts to further our tax base and promote all businesses within the city. This is an initiative that I presented to the mayor, because the way I see it, the mayor, if you see it as the city is a ship, the mayor is the rudder, okay? He steers where the city goes, and this member councils is the sales, okay? We put the wind behind the sails, but the mayor's the rudder. The mayor heard the presentation, I understand the mayor, you liked the presentation, and he recommended it. We initiated a city initiative, a shop local, buy nearby, however you want to say it, but it's a city initiative to increase local shopping within the city. So this is a professional service towards that initiative. That's how I view it.
Yes, sir. While Arnold is making his way back to the microphone, I would like to introduce Mr. Joey Crane, working on his life rank in scouting years from Troop Two. I hope we gave you enough information to take back.
One of the points that was made is that there would be nineteen mail routes selected to receive the mailings, and yet, the city of Hoover consists of several hundred mail routes. Just because where I live, we have apartments down the hill one way and across the road the other way, I doubt that where I live is part of the nineteen. I think nineteen. I think nineteen is just way, way too little. I, I understand they're going after the millennials, which are very good, but the people with the money are the seniors. So I, I think that part has to be rethought. But if, if they're going at it as an independent entity, they can make the choices. Whereas this way, if we support that and just limit it to nineteen and it's going to cost us money each time we add more routes, I don't see how it ends.
May I make a point of clarification, though? They're, they're not going about it as an individual company. They're, they're coming on board with the city as our city initiative to increase local shopping. This is a city initiative put forth by the city of Hoover.
Again.
If, if approved by the council.
One of the things I, I do pretty good is I listen pretty good. And this first phase is something that they have done in Port Payne. I don't know whether Port Payne provided them with any initial funding or whatever. But they spoke of phase two, phase three, and phase four. They spoke of a point of sale system that is under development. We, we are talking about an incomplete venture capital kind of situation. I love the whole idea of live, shop, Hoover. Absolutely, okay? If anything, that's the kind of effort from a marketing point of view that the marketing firm that we have right now, the Lala Group, could do a heck of a job on. And these people can do their, their thing independently.
Mr. Singer, obviously, I know I did not participate in the meeting, so I know virtually nothing about it at home. And I believe we all going to have a little more educational opportunity to learn more about this. One unfortunate thing is, this Hannah is very good at her, her minutes of keeping record of our meetings. And all of this will be in the minutes right before us. We do have these discussions and meetings, which are going to miss, so thank you. Mr. Singer?
President?
Watch it. I don't know what they said, but the cops can be both sides. Any other questions or comments from the council or the audience? Yes, sir. Give us your name and address.
My name is Mark Kilbride. I am a new resident at Hoover, two one one five Autumn Drive. And I'm working with a company called Waiter. We are one of the newer members of the Hoover Chamber of Commerce, and I kind of just wanted to introduce it to you guys. We're a technology company that has opened up in Hoover to offer a delivery option for restaurants that wouldn't be able to deliver without our technology or driver infrastructure. We're a new, a new free mobile application that you can download onto your smartphone. And from there, you can actually order from local restaurants and get that food delivered to your home or office for a flat five dollar fee. We're very excited about coming into this area. We're excited about the continued, continued growth in the city. We're expected to bring about two hundred, easily over two hundred entry level jobs within the next year to this area. We're excited about new revenue that we're going to be generating for local restaurants, tax revenue for the city, and convenience for its citizens in order to, to have that prepared food delivered directly to you from your local favorite restaurants.
So how much money can Casas get in ten before he's gone?
If you tell Casas to get on Waiter, we can do that, absolutely. That got mine.
Mr. President, I can ask a question. How much money do the city taxpayers put into helping you start up to serve the city?
Uh, not a dime.
Not a dime. Glad to have you here.
Awesome. Thank you.
That's your turn.
Anything else in the audience? Yes, ma'am. There you can have to come down. Just quiet. Choose an address.
Spot on at P L by three six one eight five. Okay. Anyway, I've been using Waiter for several years. It was developed in Louisiana, in my hometown. And you can order, if there's a whole bunch of you, the city council wants to order all together. You can set it up to where the council president will pay for it all. Or they can individually pay for it themselves, and it's, it's really, really simple. And I encourage you to try it and use it because, like I said, I've been using it for what, a year and a half or so now? And unfortunately, well, good luck.
I think I know how that vote would go. Anything else from the council? Any from the audience? Nothing? I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, I move for adjournment?
Sir, second, all in favor, stand up.